And so the views that I bring to that city council table may or may not be Holly Hook's views. They may, or very well be, and will be, the views of the constituents. And so when I look at vision, my vision is for Bentonville to be a place that the constituents want it to be. Not Hollywood, not private organizations, not a specific person, but what the constituents want. And so I always am glad that I take the time to listen to them and give them opportunity to voice, because I want them to be in that vision.
You're listening to The Underview, exploration in the shaping of our place. My name is Mike Rush, and we're back with our series of bonus episodes related to the upcoming elections for city and state offices here in Northwest Arkansas. Throughout the course of all of the conversations within The Underview, we have had the opportunity to dig deep into our region's opportunities and challenges. And now we enter a season of deciding who will lead our community forward. We have the incredible privilege of deciding together who will be elected and asked to meet our community's challenges and take advantage of its opportunities. And as you've seen, this decision of who our elected leaders are, it really, really matters. So the episodes ahead are an opportunity to hear directly from those seeking public office, to hear their beliefs and their values, and why they should be entrusted with one of our most sacred responsibilities. And that is the responsibility of representing our community in the public square. So today, I have the opportunity to speak with Bentonville City Council member for Ward 4, Position 2, Holly Hook. Councilmember Hook has been a resident of Bentonville for 27 years, and she is deeply involved in the community. She has a long history of civic participation from her time in college student government to her current role in the Bentonville City Council. She's also served on the Bentonville Parks and Recreation Board for six years. After earning her master's degree from the University of Memphis, she and her husband, Dr. Todd Hook, returned to his hometown of Bentonville. Here, her husband established Hook Eye Care while she continued her teaching career with Bentonville Public Schools. She later left the school system to become the Capitol Campaign Coordinator for the Amazium, where she played a pivotal role in its early development. Additionally, she worked as an adjunct business teacher at Northwest Arkansas Community College and is currently the Director of Donor Relations and Marketing at KLRC, a contemporary Christian radio station. Councilmember Hook is also dedicated to various local causes. She serves on the Board of Directors for organizations such as For the Love, Loving Choices, and the Association of Women of Harding. In her personal time, she enjoys the Bentonville Trails, playing pickleball, and being active in her church and her community. Councilmember Hook's complete biography is available on the episode webpage. I would encourage you to read that in totality. One last thing before we begin, let me explain the format of these conversations. First, these are the candidates who have officially filed to run for local office. Second, I only sat down with the candidates if both agreed to participate. Both interviews were conducted within a few days of each other, and I used the same basic set of questions which were provided to both candidates in advance. Neither candidate had the opportunity to hear the other's interview before I spoke with them. These are not debates, but they are long-form conversations based on the same principles of dialogue used in every conversation within The Underview. The focus is on the values being used to make decisions about representing their constituency. This is an exploration of how our place is shaped through the people who are shaping it. It's a search for a collective understanding of our beliefs about ourselves and our community. I refer to this as our communal theology of place, which serves as the foundation for building a shared and hopeful future. All right, let's jump in. We've got a whole lot to cover today. Councilmember Hook, thank you for sharing your table with me. I'm incredibly honored and humbled just to be able to sit here and share a table. And thanks for all the work that you do on behalf of the residents of the city of Bentonville. And I'm really looking forward to our conversation. And so welcome.
Thank you. Thank you for having me.
Of course. Let's start with your story. I know you've been a Bentonville resident for a very long time. You've been serving on the city council. So I think I'd love to know, from your perspective, what do you feel is important for people to know about you?
Okay, first off, the first time I ever heard of Bentonville, the name, I was in college, and I lived in Memphis. And a lot of people don't know this about me, but my dad was a construction worker. And Sam Walton actually came to Memphis, recruited him to come and build Warehouse 9, which was in Bentonville, as one of his projects. And so my dad, which was working in Memphis, his company, they hired his company, and he came and lived here in Bentonville. And so I was in college, like I said, so during the summers and weekends, my mom and I would drive over, my dad would fly home, drive back to see us. And so it was interesting, because I look back now, fast forward since 1983, or sorry, 84, and here I am. I'm actually serving in Bentonville. But it was neat. I feel like I saw Bentonville like a lot of people then. It was very rural, very not populated, and it was just a great opportunity. Again, I was just here, just my dad was here temporarily for a year or so. And so I was just here as a visitor, visiting my dad. But we went to church here. We stayed out of Beaver Lake, so I got to know the lakes real well. And so that was the first time I'd ever heard of Bentonville. And so, fast forward, when I was in Memphis, I was a school teacher. I taught. And I met my husband at church in Memphis. And he was there for school when he went to Southern College of Optometry. And I met him at church, and we started dating. And he was very proud of Bentonville. And he was from here. He had graduated from high school. And he pretty much made it pretty clear to me early on in the relationship that he was going back to Bentonville. And so, of course, I was, in the back of my mind, I always thought, we will for a little bit, and we'll come back. And so anyway, in 1996, we got married. And just as he had said, we got married, went on our honeymoon, and a week later, we lit up a U-Haul, came to Bentonville, Arkansas. And I jokingly say, I came kicking and screaming, but it was more because of the people I loved. And I got here, I started a teaching job. So I was a public school teacher here for five years, actually taught in Rogers one year, and then Bentonville for four. And then after that, I took a little bit of a break and had a baby. And as stay-at-home moms do, we get these great ideas and bursts of energy. And something that I noticed we didn't have here, because of my education background, was the children's museum. And so a few of us, stay-at-home moms, and there was a dad or two that was really passionate about it, very grassroots, started coming together and trying to figure out how we build a children's museum. And so anyway, I served as Vice President on that board. And that literally dream actually became a reality. I was the first employee. I was the Capitol Campaign Manager. I was responsible for $21.9 million that we raised to actually break ground on it. So I did that for 10 years. And then about the time that my kids were growing, I had the children's museum phase. That was actually calling me out of that into ministry. And so I ended up taking a job at John Brown University. I worked for KLRC. And basically, I went to help with their development program and just helped to grow that. And so I'd been there for 10 years. So I tell you all this because I feel like all of that kind of adds to my experience and has really helped me along the way. Just working at the museum, from the very, very humble starts to actually working with project managers and donors and private foundations and just really, I was the glue that held it all together and brought everybody to the table to keep the project moving. And so I felt that was something that I really cherish, and I feel valuable because I was the only employee for almost 10 years. So yeah, so that's my background. While I was working at the museum, I did have the opportunity, I always try to have some sort of involvement with my church and sometimes involvement with my community. Once I moved off being Vice President of the Amazium, I felt like I should still fill that role in community. So I applied for the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board. It was selected, and I actually had the opportunity to serve on that six years. Again, I share that because I feel like I came into city council with some prior knowledge that a lot of people aren't privy to, just because I had that experience and really knew about the park's budget and the strategy and the work plans and things like that. A little bit more experience. And so I did that. I also, at the same time, served on Loving Choices. I was on that board for six years. And now I'm currently serving on For the Love Board. So I feel like these boards have given me an opportunity to make decisions and to know about budgets and strategy plans. All of those nonprofits have each grown tremendously while I was on the board. And so I feel like I've had a little bit of input in those developments. So yeah, I lived in Bentonville. I'm a Bentonville resident. I've been here 27 years. My husband of the small business, he's an optometrist. Dr. Todd Hook has a very small business here in Bentonville. We have two children. My oldest just graduated from college and moved back to Bentonville. And then my youngest is a freshman at Bentonville High School. So that's who I am.
I love it. Thank you for sharing that. Well, you had an opportunity to serve us to do over the past four years as a member of the Bentonville City Council. And I'm just curious what your thoughts are about the significant things that you've seen happen as a part of the city council over the past four years that you've been at work?
Great question. When I decided to run for city council, I got all sorts of feedback. Are you crazy? That's a lot of work. They don't listen to us. It's all rubber stamped. And unfortunately, a lot of that feedback was negative. And so because of my enneagram of helpfulness, I always want to try to make a place better than I left it. And so I wanted to help people. And so I literally, one of the first things in the four years that I've served is I have prided myself on communication. I'm the one that, before an ordinance is passed, before a property zone is changed, I'm walking the neighborhoods, I'm calling people, I'm listening to the planning commission videos or attending planning commissions, and I'm listening for the feedback of the constituents. And I feel like that's one of the gifts I have is communication. And basically, being very proactive about meeting people and talking to them and hearing what their thoughts are and how they feel about something that's coming on the agenda. And so I feel like I've given an opportunity to people to feel like they're being heard and being represented.
I'm curious, as we now move into a reelection cycle, you've raised your hand and said that you want to run for reelection again for this position. How can you characterize where Bentonville is today, maybe where it was four years ago when you first stepped in this role?
We definitely have added a few more people. We're growing. As far as the election year, probably this, just historically, Arkansas has a very low turnout on motors. And that's sad. That makes me sad. I think one thing that I have done personally, and just I mentioned in the prior question, is I have worked really hard to get people involved. And I feel like then from my first meeting, which is actually right after COVID, so it was a little different because some of the procedures were different. But even after that, now more people are attending, more people are voicing their opinions, people are sending emails. Maybe I'm just optimistic, but I feel like people are getting involved because of some of the initiatives, they have felt like they've been a part of the change. And so with that, they're giving hope to, they have been given hope that you do have a voice and we will listen. And so I love, it's always not my favorite night, but when the city council chambers is full, I love that because that means people care. And they feel, hopefully, my goal is, when they leave there, they'll feel heard insane. And I think every citizen in our community deserves that. And that's something that I have really made that a priority.
We've got four years ahead, and you've announced your candidacy to run for this position again. I'm just curious, maybe in the most basic sense, why have you chosen to run again?
So here we are, four years into it. And I just have to tell you, the time, the energy, the effort that I have spent on trying to learn, the amount of information has been shared. I spend a lot of time just going through agendas, reading the budgets. And so I feel like I've almost been in college the last four years, and I've learned so much. And now I feel confident that we're not having to start all over, but that I already have a lot of this under my belt, if you will, and that I can move forward with this knowledge and experience. And the great thing is, during this time, I have made some incredible relationships with some of the experts and the people who have experience and our staff. And I have built up trust where I feel like I don't have the answers. And I'm usually the first to admit, I definitely don't know everything. But I'm in a position that I know the people who do. And I can come to them. I can ask them. I just feel like, as fast as we're growing and as quickly as things are happening, we need people with experience. And I definitely feel like I have learned a lot and will continue to canvass the neighborhoods, talk to the constituents, represent them well.
Yes, we're definitely just an incredible time of change and growth. And it feels, I can appreciate what you're saying. To me, it feels overwhelming. And so to take the time to be able to dig into all the details of what's going on is, I can only imagine the amount of work. And so I think my question on top of that, then, is as you look towards the next four years, what is your vision for the city of Bentonville as we move forward?
I probably should have given this disclaimer at the front, but I don't want to discount myself. But I am serving Bentonville, our community prayerfully. I'm serving it prudently and also passionately. And so the views that I bring to that city council table may or may not be Holly Hook's views. They may, or very well be, and will be, the views of the constituents. And so when I look at vision, my vision is for Bentonville to be a place that the constituents want it to be. Not Hollywood, not private organizations, not a specific person, but what the constituents want. And so I always am glad that I take the time to listen to them and give them opportunity to voice, because I want them to be in that vision. Those constituents are who I visualize. On top of that, I want, more than anything, probably the most important is safety. I think I mentioned in my background that I actually came from Memphis, and Memphis wasn't safe. And I saw that firsthand when I was in graduate school. I had a couple of incidents that were very scary. My parents, I would keep them up at night worrying because they knew that I was out on the streets by myself. I was going into buildings on campus at University of Memphis by myself. And so I always, any decision I made, I'm going to look at the safety factor because it's huge. And I think it's important. Also, a vision I have is I want us to be welcoming to the people who are already here and the people who are coming here. I feel like that's important. Obviously, economically healthy, that's very important to me. Again, I can't emphasize how much I didn't realize I was learning while I was in Memphis, but I was watching and seeing. And I saw a city that grew too fast, grew too much, and ended up failing miserably economically. And so it's always going to be in the back of my mind of what works and what doesn't work.
I think as we look towards the future, I'm really curious, what do you feel like some of the initiatives that we, as a city, need to be considering or looking forward over the next four years to take advantage of the opportunities that we have? And we'll get to the challenges in a minute, but I want to start maybe in the positive space of what are the opportunities ahead? What are the key initiatives that we need to be working on together as a city?
I cannot wait until the day that Bentonville can roll out the new master plan.
The land use plan.
The land use plan, yes. Because I came in the middle of one that I wasn't a part of the process. And during this process, our city staff has been so intentional about bringing the community together. I have sent hundreds of emails telling people, hey, I need you to come to this event. I need you to voice your opinion. Because the best way that we can be consistent is to have a consistent land use plan and to know what that plan is. And it is so valuable. It will help with the infrastructure because the utilities department will know, hey, this is probably an area that's going to grow. So we need to make sure we get those wires underground or whatever it is. And so I cannot express the importance of it. We're close. We're not to the finish line yet. But I do know during my second term, that will help make the decisions easier. The best way to disappoint somebody is not know the expectation. And so now, when constituents look at the retired one, or we'll say added age, it's not matching up. And that is so hard. Because I'm sure back then, they all went to these meetings, I hope, I don't know. Again, I wasn't involved in that process, which is surprising to me because I was pretty involved in the community. But I don't ever remember being invited to the library or to the fire station to come say, hey, this is what I want my neighborhood to look like, or this is where I want us to be. So I feel like maybe, we're definitely doing it better because of communication and just the awareness has been there. But also, we've been so intentional. And I cannot wait to that because I think that causes a lot of the heartache and a lot of the disappointment. And I would say that initiative in itself, I've attended almost all the meetings, even went and took notes for some constituents that couldn't make it and gave them, showed them electronically how to get their comments on there. So yes, I think that's huge. I think within the next probably year or so, we're going to have to work cooperatively with our surrounding cities to create the street and trail maps for the connectivity. That's huge. And I think that's important. I feel like we're introducing more modes of transportation, and that's great. But do we have and are we at a place where it's a reality, where it really happened? Just this morning, I took my car to get an oil change, so I had to walk home, which was fine. That's what I could do. I was able to. But then I realized, if I pay cash, I'll get a discount. So then I had to ride my bike to the store to get cash. And I saw some things that made that a barrier. And so I know we're not there, but I know it's an initiative that we are going to be very intentional about is the connectivity, not just in Bentonville, but city, inner-city, I would say Northwest Arkansas. And I think that's important. And then finally, I think we have to continue the collaborative work of all of our staff on the capital infrastructure improvements. Again, some of that will come with the master plan or with the master plan, but also, I think, just continually going in and looking at where are our deficiencies and what needs improvement.
As you explain this, all that's in my head is the challenges of growth, right? And so I think one of the things that I think continues to come back into our conversation is how do we meet the challenges of growth? But how do we really maintain Bentonville's unique character? And the things that, I've been here for a long time, I'm biased, you have too, but how do we meet the challenges of growth and at the same time preserve the character that we all love so much about this place?
Yes. And that is the million-dollar question. As I mentioned before, I have great relationships. And I just want to voice, one of my dearest friends is the mayor of Bartlett, Tennessee. And I reached out to him. And it was no surprise that they have the same issues as Bentonville, Arkansas. It's not a citywide, it's not a statewide, it's a countrywide, as far as growth and how we do it. I think what makes us unique is because we do have some private vendors, and we have some amazing nonprofits. I work in the nonprofit world. And so I get to be a megaphone for them. And I see how active and how passionate they are about whatever their cause is. They do it well. And so I, 27 years, I want that charm. And I, but I want us to grow. And I said this when I ran the first time, and I'm going to say it again, I want us to run it to grow sensibly, but sustainable. And I think there's ways that we can do this. I don't know that Holly Hook has the ways, but I know the people that do. And I know that we can come together collaboratively at a table and say, hey, what does this look like? What's working? What's not? And again, bringing in those constituents. Because the ones who's been here a long time, they're feeling the growing pains, and they've got opinions. And so I think just we're innovative. We're smart people. We didn't get here, like I said, my dad started working with Sam Walton in 1984. So there's people here who know we're going to grow. We just know how, we have to know how to grow and do it sensibly and sustainable.
Maybe to dig into that just a little bit, I'm curious, do you feel like there's some like principles or values that we really, if we could all agree and center around those things, that it's like a place of safety in many ways for how we're going to grow forward? I'm just curious your thoughts on what are those foundational bedrock elements that are going to help us do or maybe overcome this challenge that we have in front of us?
I think it's keeping the people involved in the projects and making sure that people understand what's happening and why it's happening, and let them be a part of it. Yeah, that's tough. It's hard. And that's one thing I've learned on city council, is we have a lot of hard decisions, but we all come from different expertise backgrounds. And what keeps me up at night is that we get stagnant and we don't make decisions. But I feel like that we all want to make the hard decisions. We just want to do the next right thing.
And you mentioned, too, with so many residents that have been here for a long time and new people coming literally every day, just the desire, like how, when we think about creating a neighborhood or a community where everybody that wants to live here is welcome, what are some of the ways we can think about that as a community? How do we build what I actually say inclusive communities, but communities that allow everyone who wants to be here, the opportunity to be here? How do you think about that?
Yeah, it's funny. People are moving here. And I laugh. And I said, mostly, we're responsible for that because we're bringing, as I mentioned in my intro, my son just moved back to Bentonville because he loved where he was raised, and he wanted to come back here. And then we invite friends and family to come here because it's not a secret anymore that this is the best place to live. But I do feel like we can welcome them in. What I don't like is when people, when they move here because they like it, but then they want to change it. And I was like, okay, And I was like, okay, what drew you here? What were the things that you liked? And they'll mention the good schools, the parks, the trails, but then they'll mention the things that they don't like. And then they automatically want to change that. And so I think again, it's coming together with everybody having that same attitude of this is a really good place. How can we make it where we can all get along? I always say can buy, like I want us all to feel welcome. I want us all to be here. I don't want a specific economic class here. I want all classes here. I don't want a specific ethnic group here. I want everybody and, and we can do it. But again, it goes back to intentionality of making sure we're intentional of being welcoming to the diverse types of people.
No surprise in a place that's growing at the rate that it is, there are some challenges that we're facing as a community. I think you're aware of the Walton Family Foundation, they recently released their quality of life report. And it identified some of these top challenges that I think a lot of us have been talking about for a long time, that of affordable housing, transportation and infrastructure. And I'm curious, do you agree that those are challenges? Or do you feel like there are other things that we need to be considering and focused on for the future as well?
I do. I'm, and like I say, I think that survey could have happened almost anywhere and those would have been the challenges. So yes, I agree, I do think there are challenges. But funny story, when I moved to Arkansas in 1996, I made the comment and I just said, wow, there's like orange barrels everywhere. And a very wise couple that were older said, oh, don't you know Arkansas stores their barrels on the road? And I just laughed and I thought, so let's be fair, that was 1996. And here we are, 2024, and we're still seeing a lot of barrels or road construction signs. I just think that's, it's not a new problem. And I feel like sometimes we try to make it a new problem, but I think it's something that's been around for a long time. And if people are patient with us and if they know that the project's coming and they see what the impact will be after the project's done. And I'm speaking specifically with traffic, I feel like that we make progress. And that's again, when I said people need to be involved in the project, nobody likes to wake up in the morning and see that their road's closed. The city does an amazing job and you can actually get alerts of telling, hey, this is going to be closed. This is when it's going to close, this is when it's projected to open. And I love that. I love the communication. And yes, we do have some, some very real issues, can't deny that. Do we work on them to the best of our ability? I want to say yes. I, and again, I have a front row seat because I'm in it every day. A city council job is not just twice the week meeting. It's literally a little bit of time every day just to stay caught up. And so when I see those challenges and I know what we're doing behind the scenes, it does give me hope. And I do try to communicate to that, to people. And I think that's what's important is, hey, this is why we're doing this. Same thing, I talked earlier about having the future plan for our utilities. We need to know because when we take down a single resident and we put up six or seven townhouses, that's a different amount of toilets flushing than that single house. And so that's going to stress and strain our infrastructure, our sewer and water. And so again, I think it's communicating and understanding and having, knowing what's coming is imperative. And none of us know, none of us have a crystal ball, but I do think, I'm doing the research. The best predictor of the past is the future, I mean, of the future is the past. And like I said, we've been grown since 1996 and I can only see and hear that it's going to be more.
I do want to talk about housing, just because I feel like number one, it's the biggest thing everybody talks about. You're also at the crossroads of so many of these conversations. And so I'm really curious your perspective when you think about Bentonville and maybe Northwest Arkansas in general. But when you think about Bentonville's responsibility or housing challenges, maybe, maybe if I gave you a crystal ball. Like how do, how should we as residents be thinking about that? Because obviously the land use plan is going to be something that's going to help set expectations for that and infrastructure and hopefully trying to get ahead of it. But where we're at today, I'm really curious your thoughts about when we think about housing, what should be in the back of our mind? Or what are the solutions that we as a community need to be thinking about, supporting, preparing for, kind of the whole gamut of it, if you will?
Yes. I wish that 20 years ago, we would have thought about the impact that we have caused on our city. Everybody wakes up and says, oh, we don't have anything affordable. But then I'm like, we watched them tear it down. And a lot of it, specifically downtown, what we tore down was affordable, but what we built is not affordable. And so I don't like to look in the past because you can't go back and redo. But I think we have to be aware of that. I, when people are surprised, they're like, wow. I, I know my husband, when we first started looking for houses, we lived in an apartment when we first moved here. He hadn't landed a job and I had, I was going to be a teacher. So we were basing our, our living arrangements on just my salary. So we got an apartment and it was not in Bentonville. And when we started looking at houses and we saved, we both, both of us, we worked two jobs because he lived in Bentonville. He wanted to be in Bentonville, that was his passion. And we both worked hard to, and I don't want to say earned our way, but it's what it was. And so when we started looking, the houses that we were looking were downtown. And of course we're kicking ourselves now that we didn't buy them. But in so many of those, I used to go to a Bible study in what was a very affordable triplex, which was torn down to four very upscale townhomes. And first of all, let me just repeat what I said, like we have done this to ourselves. And not we, you and I personally, but thinking past, what can we do now? So we have to be more intentional about finding housing in the middle. That missing middle, you're probably familiar with that. I'm sure you've done some interviews on that. I hear my son just moved back and I've heard so many times, oh, young people, they want to be in apartments. They don't want yards, they don't want maintenance, they don't want, my son doesn't want to lease, like he wants a house with a yard. And so I think that's a little bit of a misconception because I do think people do want houses, they just can't afford them. And so I wish that we would have built some more moderately priced houses. My husband and I, we say, we bought in 1997 and we could never afford to have the home that we have now, which is not a huge house. It's just the housing market is crazy right now. And so I, I really think that we have to work on finding some middle ground with some affordable houses that will actually give people opportunity. What I see a lot is some of the prices of the apartments, the townhouses, it's outrageous right now. So it's not just houses are high, that rent is high, groceries are high, limit. And so I want, I want us to look at it four-pronged. I think that we should really work on our needs, our housing, transportation, our utilities, those things that we need to live. And I think we have to get a grasp on that as far as affordability.
I'm curious your perspective on what do you feel like the city's role is within that?
That's a great question. I think I just mentioned, my husband and I, we worked hard to get where we were. And I do feel like what's going to happen? Because I, I often say we are lower, we are upper lower class. And that's how I define my husband and I, I'm not barely getting by, but not much above that. And so when our taxes start rising and when our costs take high, we're going to be in part of that population of not being able to have housing. And so I don't know, I don't want the city to feel like that has to be on them. As far as making houses affordable. I do think there are some things we can do, like help with sound in and those types of things. But I want to be very careful with taking tax dollars from people who may just be living paycheck to paycheck. And I don't, handing it out to citizens just so they can live in Bentonville, that's where I stand. And I, it was interesting when that big affordable housing project came out, I'm on the board for the love. And one of, one of the team members said, oh, but don't you want our clients to have a place to live? Because a lot of people, some of the people who come to For the Love are homeless and they don't have jobs. And I was like, okay, I, there's a huge misconception about affordable housing and attainable housing. Like it's two different things. And most of your affordable housing, there's a threshold of you'd have to make less than $90,000 to be able to get money off your rent or something like that. And so I told her, I said, look, I said, if we'll call him Bill to protect it. If Bill made 60 to 80,000, I could find him a place to live. But that's a different type of affordable housing and that's more of a mental health issue. And I did bring that up that night, that I think people have misconceptions about who is actually going to be in these affordable housing, houses that are being built. And we have some great private partners, we have some wonderful nonprofits. I love that they can come together and be at the table and help figure this out. Now, the particular one that we were asked to rezone, it was interesting. Not a lot was said and not a lot was published, that was actually in a flood zone.
And so just for clarity, you're referring to the Bentonville school, teacher's school.
Yes, yes, because I'm a former teacher, I support teachers. I, again, I taught here, not everybody can afford to live in Bentonville when they teach and I get that. That's a road that I've traveled. But yes, specifically to that one, what I didn't want to do and what I heard from the constituents was we don't want our property to flood. And one thing, and I don't know, we've talked about some good initiatives, flooding is huge for me, huge. And so one thing that the city passed was the three foot where they have to build it up, like if it's in a flood plain, may actually have to build it up. When I was on city council, we had houses less than 10 years old that were flooding. And that's sad. Nobody expects when you buy a new house, that it's going to flood. And so I was so unhappy that we passed that because I felt again, a safety factor, we were protecting our constituents. On the other side though, when you do have to do that, the properties around that are already established, water's going to run down. And if you know anything about Glen Valley, which I've been here long enough to know, 25 years ago, it flooded badly. Those constituents had worked so hard and attended city council meetings, did all they could to get some drainage repairs to get, that I understood their concern. If we build this high density next to them, the water is going to go somewhere and is it going to flood? There was not a picture in the paper of me in my rain boots walking that property that day when I was praying over it and trying to get some wisdom to get a feel for it. I was like, wow, this is soggy, like this is really soggy. Do I think the engineers would have done a great job on that project? Absolutely. But when they have to go into the projects around it, that's when it gets really expensive and that's when it falls on the city. And, and again, that was one of those projects that I talked to people, I called them, I read their emails. And the constituents were who I listened to. And I, I think that was the night I came famous for my, it's never going to be a Holly Hook vote. It's going to be what's, what I hear the constituents say, which recently I heard from somebody, they're like, but you're a leader, you need to make those decisions. So you don't have to listen to them. And so I had to pause because I was like, first off, I feel like I represent them, that's why I'm here. And I feel like I need to bring their voice to the table. And secondly, calling me a leader, yes, I serve in a leadership position, but there are leaders all throughout Bentonville that have knowledge, experience, expertise, that they'll have a seat at the table. And it might go to them and ask them. And so I do, I feel like, in that particular case, there wasn't a lot mentioned about what the constituents, the, and the traffic. I, my son just started Bentonville High School and I had heard about the traffic, I went up and monitored the traffic. But boy, I had no idea about the traffic until I just took a freshman to Bentonville High School. And I can't even imagine adding one more car to that area. I almost got hit twice yesterday trying in and out of trying to get to a parent teacher conference. And that's a safety, again, I always have that, only safety, it's a safety concern.
You've mentioned a couple of times, the voice of the constituent is like this factor, right? On how you're making decisions, obviously you're an elected representative. And one of the things that came out of this Walton Family Foundation study was that when residents feel like they're talking to their local government, sometimes they don't feel like that's listened to. I feel like I'm hearing the opposite from you, right? You're listening very well. I'm curious, what does that process look like? Because if we have a real low kind of civic engagement, if you will, for whatever reason, how are you making sure like when you're listening to constituency, right? It's not just the loudest voices, what is the most representative voices? There's sometimes maybe aren't at the table as well too. I'm just, I'm curious, like as an elected representative, what is that feedback cycle and what does that work? And I asked this just because you brought this up a couple of times and it's fascinating to me. How do you process that feedback from the citizens to make sure that it's representative? And sometimes not just loudest voices in the room. And I think this is a challenge for any city council member, obviously, but I'm curious how you process that.
Great question. So a couple of things. I actually do diligence. I normally, I say this, if you live near the project and it's going to affect your day to day, I listen with two ears. If you live away from the project or for whatever. Also, I reach out to people. I don't just listen to the ones who, I was surprised, I called a few people who I knew lived in the, again, I've been here 27 years. I felt like at one time I knew the whole city, I'm getting sad because we're getting so big, but I, I don't necessarily feel that now. But I called people and I asked them and I was like, hey, tell me what you think. You haven't stated your thoughts. I'm curious, because you live next door to it or you live in that neighborhood, what do you think? And so I don't rely just on the loudest. And I try and I think I said early on, I'm the one that's came us in the neighborhoods and talking and asking. And it's interesting how many people say, no one has ever came to my door. Just recently I was over at a subdivision because they had a, a project come into planning commission. And I, and I were just like, no one's ever asked us. And I was like, you can talk too. And that's something that I think citizens have a responsibility and I think that's something we need to work on. Like we can't constantly be relying on us going to find out the answers they need to let us know. And I think we've gotten better with that. And the number of emails we're getting, the number of responses is, is remarkable, actually. It's time consuming, it's very time consuming, I'm responding to everyone. And that's one thing that I get, they don't necessarily like my answer. They don't necessarily like my answer, but they like the fact that I respond to them. And they feel at least that I listen to them. And that is hard. That is hard. And I never want wealth or status, or I don't even know. Or I never want that to, to trump just any citizen that lives in Bentonville.
I think within that vein, you're, as a city council member, I know people have very high expectations of you. Probably unfair of any city council member. When you think about, what does it mean to be a responsible citizen? I'm hearing you talk about what it looks like for people to be engaged in the civic process and being a part of local government and part of their community. I'm curious, what expectations would you have of the residents and citizens of Bentonville to help be a part of what the city is, is going to become in its future?
Yes, and I think our mayor does a great job of giving opportunity. You can, she has a mayor council that you can attend and learn. There's, like I mentioned with our Parks and Recreation and also with our master planning, we had community events and you show up and you listen. Come to city council. They're not, it may or may not be the most exciting thing you can do that day, but it can at least get you informed and get you involved. And so I love having constituents coming. I was just, it was interesting. I was just having lunch with our police and fire. Today's nine 11. And I'm very, it always takes me back. And so I always try to do something intentional. So I went and had lunch with our fire and police and I was listening to them. And it was just, it was so encouraging to hear how they engage in the community. They have community night outs and the fire stations go into the schools and they meet. And so I think that responsibility to the students, to the citizens is to become involved. And if you can't attend, one thing that we did this year, as this four years of city council, was keeping the meetings on Zoom. It worked well in COVID, but it actually works well now because not everybody can be away from their families on Tuesday night at six o'clock. And so now they can zoom in. And I know that there are people that are willing to just watch it, just to stay in contact. And so I think that's important. I, those input meetings, city events, things like that. It's important to hear and to learn and to know what is going on. And I, and again, that's how I meet my constituents is I'm out in the community pretty much every day. And I'm trying to have conversation with them. But as we said, we're growing so quickly, I can't meet everybody. Do I want to? Absolutely. Am I attempting? For sure. But I'm doing that to say, hey, how are you involved? What are you doing? Like I said, I was serving on Parks and Recreation Board. Why? Because my family lived at the ball parks. And there were things that I wondered or I questioned or I, and so what do I do? I find to be on the Parks and Recreation. Crazy, but it was like, hey, if I have an opinion, I should probably try to do something about it. Or if I have an idea, I should probably do it. And there's always, I, and one thing I do, and I, right now, I know the public transportation is accepting committee members. We've had some people who have been very adamant in their opinions on what they think about our bus transportation. And so I sent an application. I said, here, apply. I can't promise you'll get on there, but you won't if you don't try. And same thing, there's a couple of openings right now on some other boards. And I send those applications out to people and say, here's your chance. You have come in to me. You have made negative comments. Apply for this board. Come be a part of the mayor's council. And, and that's what I do. I'm constantly trying to plug people in to the community.
I think I appreciate the idea that obviously citizens have a responsibility. I'm curious, your thoughts, like where have you seen that work really well in our community?
Funny story. When I prayed about and started talking to people who I think are very wise and wisdom about running for city council, I realized immediately my husband was going to be my worst constituent. Like he is constantly almost, he's not the negative person, but. So my proudest moment, or one of my proudest moments has been when there was some work being done. Again, we go back to traffic on Mobley. And literally within days of creating a new road, Fifth Street, we realized that we were not going to be able to get out of our neighborhood. We truly were blocked in. And our neighborhood was furious. They, there were safety concerns there. We couldn't get a fire truck in, we couldn't get a fire truck out. And I, I don't know how to say this nicely. I try not to, I really limit my time on social media because I feel like it's a free place to vent, but it's not productive. And, but people were going crazy. It was the outrage and they were mad at everybody and anything. And so I immediately, within the next day, I was talking to some city leaders. I was like, hey, do you realize we can't get out of our neighborhood? We are literally blocked to get out of the neighborhood to make a left turn was impossible and even a right. And I was like, what can we do? And so the mayor, who she's so good at, was like, let's bring to the table. So I canvassed the neighborhood. I had a little sheet, I made, I typed up a note that said, hey, let's talk about this. Come to a meeting and I put the time and the date and bring your complaints. But more importantly, bring your ways of solving it. Be thinking about this. And so I taped it on everybody's door and everything. And we literally had over 75 people show up. And during that meeting, we had the stakeholders there. I was like, I don't want this to be a gripe session. I don't want, I wanted to see progress. And so we had, because of course it was the Walmart Home Office. So we had the Walmart people there. We had the city folks there and we had the neighborhood there. And when we left there that night, they, it had come to a conclusion. And granted, this didn't happen overnight, but they concluded that it was a problem for safety and that we were going to work on this. And over time, they actually built us a road into a, into their parking lot so that we can cut through to get to Eighth Street to get out of our neighborhood. And even my husband, who again, he's my constituent, he was, I hate to word it, shocked because when you get to this age, not hardly anything shocks us. But he could not believe that they listened to us. They built us a road and we are able to sneak through the parking lot, go. It's not a public ground. It's literally cutting through their parking lot. And it's temporarily, as, as the buildings are being done, but it wasn't the answer. And I, and our neighborhood was like, I can't believe that. And I was like, it's a matter of getting the right people at the table and having calm conversations. And that's what I do. I rarely come up with a solution, but I always come with the people and I can communicate that. And so I was, and it's worked. They did try a few things first. They put the do not block drive. I, I said to the police officers today, the only place in the city that people listen to that is in front of the police station. And they laughed, saying, no, they block us in too. So I knew that sign was like a band-aid on cancer and I knew it wasn't going to work. And so I continued. I was super, just persevered as far as we have to come up with a solution. And we did. And I think that really built some trust in those constituents. Because it was like, they finally felt heard.
One of the things as we talk about how our community works is that I want to normalize the things that maybe sometimes we don't talk about, which is our fears, right? And so one of the questions that I've asked everyone that I've had the chance to sit with is, what are your fears for this place?
I, being a Christian, being faith-based, I know I'm feared. But I do have things that keep me up at night. And again, it goes back to wishing that I had all the answers every day and start my day. Just help me to do the best thing. So what I want and what I hope for Bentonville is that people will continue to pride in the city in that we won't have division. The beginning of the conversation, I mentioned Memphis. I, the only reason I go back to Memphis is for the people. I think people are important here. And I don't want what happened there to happen here with safety concerns and just the sprawl was fraught house so much now that the economic detrimental that has caused. I think for me, again, it's, I'm not fearful. I'm hopeful that we can still be the Bentonville that people like us, long timers are proud of. And that people want to be here. I, I hate for our middle class and lower class to have to move out. Because I feel like that's a dynamic in the city that I would not want to see.
One of the things that I'm curious about, and you've mentioned this a few times in our comments here, is just the role of your faith and what you do and how you look at your role within serving our city, serving our community, serving the people that live here. And I, I'm just curious if you can maybe help give some context. So how does this part of your life really help inform what you do and the actions and the how you make decisions about what happens in our city?
Well, my faith is very important. I make every decision, as I said at the beginning, prayerfully. I always want what's best for people. I care. I've even been told I care too much, which I don't know if that's even possible. Because I think we're in a world right now where people need to feel loved, taken care of. And I, I do. I don't compartmentalize it. It's who I am. It's what I do every day. I serve it for the love. I, instead of, like when we had some flood victims, I went and bought them groceries. And I don't know, maybe city council isn't the right fit for me. Maybe I should be like the welcome one again. I don't know, because I want to serve on city council with compassion. And it sounds like a pretty big goal. But I want to make sure that people feel loved and that they feel cared for and that I'm here for them, not just as a political leader, but as a person who cares. And when I walk, we had a fire downtown and I drove by on a Sunday afternoon. And then I went and I said, hey, what can I go get for you guys? And I think that my purpose here in Bentonville is to help people. And somehow the two intersected of being on city council and helping people. And so I, it's just what I do. It's who I am. That won't change. Even if city council goes away, I'm still going to help people. I'm still going to care for people. I'm still going to find the best in people. One of the biggest compliments I had just two nights ago was somebody said, hey, I thought it was funny that I saw the most liberal person's sign in a yard next to yours. And I just laughed and I said, I take that as a compliment. And they go, you do? And I was like, yeah. I said, I'm not really into politics and I'm not really into parties. I'm into people. And for whatever reason, they wanted a sign in my yard. It's probably because they felt like I listened. They probably didn't agree with me, what I said. But I was able to convey it in a loving way that hopefully they took for it, from it, that I cared. And it's just who I am.
I, I just want to say, no, I'm humbled that you would share that. I thank you for your vulnerability and thank you for your transparency. And I know people, when they listen to this, they won't be able to tell. But obviously I can tell it's a very emotional conversation. And so I'm humbled that you would share that with me. And I wish people could see your face, your facial emotions as we, yeah, as we talk through this. And so thank you for that. Humbled that you would share.
Thank you. I, in my job, I'm the behind the scenes person. And so I, I'm definitely not here for the title. I'm definitely not here for the accolades because there's not many, but I'm here for the people.
One of the things that I've been pursuing through all of these conversations is this idea of wholeness. And it's been a part of all these conversations of what does community wholeness look like? As we collectively come together to understand the things that we believe about our place and things that we believe about each other. And so when I say that word wholeness, I'm really curious, what does, what does that look like to you? To pursue or to be a part of making this community whole?
Just first off, when I think of wholeness, I think of unity, which I always laugh that unity is a community. And so I feel like it's every part of it, every aspect of the wholeness of the community, whether it's our transportation, our property, our water. Everything as a whole, looking at it holistically, which, and not fragmented, not broken, not distracted by all the things, but coming together as a community as a whole. And then working together and being together.
Thank you for your time and thank you for sharing a table with me. Councilmember Hook, thank you for, yeah, the work that you do every day on behalf of serving this community and the city. And I've been honored to sit with you. And I know as we move towards an election season, there's all kinds of things to do, all kinds of people to talk to. But thank you for sharing your story and thank you for your vulnerability and transparency for, you know, serving our community, whether you have.
Thank you. Thank you for letting me be here and allowing for me to share who I am and what I'm about.
Thank you.
Well, thank you to Councilmember Hook for taking the time to share a table with me and for her willingness to discuss the opportunities and the challenges that the city of Bentonville will face over the next four years. I continue to truly value the unique perspectives that everyone brings to the table. And I believe that at the core of every conversation, people are genuinely trying to do the right thing for our city. I'm incredibly thankful to Holly for all of the ways that she's served our community and our region with her time and her resources. Her work and focus have played a significant role in the shaping of our place today. And those efforts will continue to influence our community for years and decades to come. I encourage you to visit Holly's campaign website. There's a link on the episode webpage to learn more about her story, her family, the issues, and the initiatives she views as necessary for the city and for upcoming events. For our next episode, I have the opportunity to speak for candidate for Bentonville City Council, Ward Four, Position Two, Jocelyn Lampkin.
My top three reasons for running. Smart growth, which affordable housing, I lump under that. But smart growth, infrastructure improvement and family oriented initiatives. So when I'm saying smart growth and talking about affordable housing, I'll just be honest. When the city council didn't approve the zoning for the initiative to provide housing for teachers and first responders or city workers, I was quite disappointed in that because if we don't care enough for them to have a place to live close to where they work, then what are we saying?
Well, I look forward to sharing that conversation. I'll say thank you again for following along with our story. And I hope that these conversations can help inform and inspire decision to choose the candidate that will rise to meet the challenges ahead for our city and our community. Stay tuned, we have a whole lot more to come. And I want to just say thank you again for everything that you are doing to be a part of the shaping of our place.